First, I think we have a recognition we're going to do in the public chambers. So if anyone's going to be interested, they'll all just sort of sleep over and take a picture quick. And everybody else can hang out here or come see, whatever you'd like to do. And we'll meet back in here after we take the picture.
This is about the thing tomorrow night.
Oh, thanks.
And almost every year, sometimes the focus is a little different. But it's business development who are particularly focused on businesses that are low income individuals. It's simply, it's being communicated development organizations or, I don't know, probably as more focused on what we're going to do. It's kind of a trio, it's about a company that's out in March.
March of 2020?
March of 2020, we're doing, but someone's been on just to see if you have a copy of that. David, how are you doing this morning?
Good.
The relationship between.
Great, thank you, everyone. Why don't we jump right into resolutions? We've got a thick day here today. Uh, look for a motion on the approval of minutes. Everyone has their real. I appreciate it. Any discussion? Not all in favor? We'll jump right in resolutions. Uh, first one of the day is the resolution authorizes budgetary modification for the Department of Community Development for Tourism Planning to Accept and Disperse Transit Funds. David, I feel like we've seen this one a bunch of times, but I think they're a little bit different each month, right?
Yeah, they are a little different each month. Typically, this time of year, we have one that modifies budgets. Uh, when we budget revenue for the rural transit programs, it's pretty much a guess. Uh, because a lot of it depends on ridership and, and some other things that you just don't know until your transition through the year. So we put a general number, nine hundred thousand or so in the, in the budget as anticipated. And then when we get towards the end of the year, we have a better picture of what that real number's going to be. And this resolution, um, just increases the revenue line to reflect what we're actually going to get. It's a little bit higher, uh, this year because there was a change in the formula for the funding. So the numbers are a little bit higher than, than we normally would have at the end of the year.
On for motion? Roy, thank you. Second. Paul, appreciate it. Any discussion? I can see the numbers coming in a little higher. Appreciate them changing the formula and actually giving us extra. Nice to see. Okay, all in favor? Any votes? Paul, thank you, everyone.
Uh, next one is a request for authorization to file an application with the, um, Mayor Colman and Community Renewal, who are, um, working in concert with the government on community development block rate funding. Uh, as you know, we, um, have run a well and septic repair replacement program for, uh, as long as I can remember. There's a big need in the county and the rural areas to help, uh, low and moderate income folks, uh, keep, um, their water and wastewater systems intact. And, and, uh, some people, believe it or not, don't even have those services in their homes. We always run out of money. Uh, this is a new opportunity to apply for some more to continue helping, uh, folks in need. It also establishes, uh, a public hearing for the December meeting of the legislatures. It's a requirement of the grant that we have, uh, the meeting at a legislative, the public hearing at a legislative meeting.
So this authorizes to apply and, uh, also sets the time?
Yes.
All right, great. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make it.
Okay, there's a second. Any discussion? Uh, Dave, this is, like you said, this has been going out for years. I know it's happening, obviously with a lot of money. It really helps, what, about eight or nine, somewhere in that range? Is that what we've seen on these?
Well, it depends on, um, the soil conditions where you might be doing one of those projects. Um, if you have to go to a raised bed system, um, it can be thirty, forty thousand dollars by the time you get done. So, um, we might get, if we're lucky, we'll get ten or eleven, uh, out of this. We'd get a couple of easier ones.
As far as the application process, I know we've got a bit of a, because again, we don't have able to help nearly as many people as need it. Is there, do we do, uh, other than just this informational piece, is there a mailing? Is there, can we talk a little bit about how we get this information out there to the folks who?
Yeah, so that's part of the reason that the CDPG requires public hearings is to help, uh, spread the word. Uh, also, we have, um, some advertisements in, uh, local papers. And, um, the program manager, uh, Scanlon, will be attending a couple of different community type meetings where, um, it would be, um, we'll have the probably relevant target audiences at those places. Um, and she'll be distributing information, uh, talking to the folks at those community events as well. And while you, you wanted to talk about the events you're going to?
Uh, we also, um, in addition to, well, I'm going to the community event at the Elks on the twenty first. And I also have the opportunity at the town of Hannibal, kind of do a, do a thing with transportation. Um, I'm a member of Oswego Housing Development Council, so they're involved. But we also have a referral network with, um, Office for the Aging, Arise, and pretty much everybody knows about us. Enforcement officers in the towns, especially those folks. So that's how we get the word out.
And the cities, I know we usually talk about the, the, the septic system side of it, but in the city, there is the lateral hookup as well for low income folks. Is that something that we have?
Well, cities generally, um, you don't run into that issue, uh, because the systems have been in place for so long, you know. Find typically, uh, income eligible family that doesn't already have a lateral hooked up. But for example, um, there's, um, well, our, our, uh, project involving going out one seventy six and down Howard Road. We don't require anybody to hook up to that, uh, line, but certainly that they're welcome to. And if there, um, were folks who were income eligible in that stretch, um, they could be potential.
So it's only the initial setup, that they've got a failed lateral, anything like that with this?
Well, and we could do failed laterals in the city. However, the city has their own, their own eligibility, they could apply. And that's kind of seems favorable. I know that Fulton Community Development has applied for community development block grants before. So does the city of Oswego. So, you know, I would encourage the cities to apply on their own so that they can address their needs specifically. Because the county, we have so much out there that, you know, if you have an opportunity to apply, apply on your own. The towns could also apply, except they don't have the staff, so.
Okay, now that's.
That's what we do.
Yeah, who, uh, engineers in the system and how they're set?
So, um, typically, the process would be, we put out a request for proposals from engineering companies. We'll select, uh, the one, uh, engineer to oversee the whole program. Um, they work with the homeowner to develop a plan that's appropriate for, for their residents and their, uh, soil types. Those plans then are reviewed and approved by, uh, the engineers at the county health department. And then the homeowners, uh, are given some, uh, information about potential contractors. And they select their own contractor and, um, work out whatever. We don't tell them who they have to use. We just, uh, give them, uh, specification, approved by the health department. And then when it's done, they're, the engineer and health department sign off and the homeowner signs off at the end.
Is this a payback?
Um, it depends on the family's income. The lower their income, the less contribution they have to have. So if they're at the higher end of, uh, being eligible, there could be a combination grant and loan. Typically, uh, the loan agreements we have with a lot of these people are somewhere between five and fifty dollars a month, um, depending on their ability to pay, so.
Okay, that, the, the, I know that, you know, in the past, I've asked the same question for the past six years, okay? Now, the question I have is that we applied for five hundred thousand dollars. Now, the, the purpose of the payback, okay, or the loan is for them to have, you know, some skin in the game. And also, it helps us deliver more than what we have. So how much more than five hundred thousand dollars have we been able to accumulate over the years? There were, we could help, instead of helping, you know, like legislature stuff says, you know, sometimes it's only eight or nine because of the cost. Are we able to go to ten or eleven because of this, you know, payback? That's what I'm, I'm looking for. At some point in time, David, and you know, I know you don't have the answer in front of you right now, and I doubt.
I got the answer.
Oh, you do?
Um, usually, we can do one more over the years. Um, right now, in our repay fund, we have, I think, sixteen thousand about. So that would be a half a system. But we also use this money as like match money to show that the county's putting something into this, uh, grant application. So that's the big plus of this. And plus, it helps homeowners understand that, you know, this is not for free. You have to maintain your system. So, you know, we'll make it affordable for you because we understand that you're having a hard time for whatever reason. But, you know, help us out so we can help somebody else.
On occasion, we might have a larger amount in that, uh, local pot because there's a lien put on the property when we put the system in. And if they sell their home within a certain period of time, then they're required to pay the, uh, remaining balance back. So from time to time, you'll see us do a budget modification to accept a lump sum from one of these folks who, uh, is moving on for whatever reason and then paying down that loan all at once.
Just one other little quick one. Is there a maximum allowable income? Because I, the reason I ask this is because I know I've had two people in the city of Fulton that I sent them to the CVA in Fulton. Because that one time, we, you know, I tried to send them up here, but we suggested they, you know, the city of Fulton applied for grant, and they did. But the people that applied for the help on their systems, uh, they were over the income amount. Is there an income max at the county level? And what would that be for the people that, maybe they may be a hundred dollars over, a thousand dollars over the max, but they just can't afford to do it themselves.
Right, um, it depends how you write the grant. When we write them, typically, it's eighty percent of medium and less. If you're on that eighty percent of medium threshold, that's when you have like a ten percent, um, co-pay or so to say. If you're fifty percent or less, it's usually five percent. And then under thirty percent of medium income, there's no, uh, no, um, match. So it's how you write it. I think the city of Fulton has written there is fifty percent or less because you're more competitive that way. But, you know, I, I think the people closer to eighty percent of medium really are struggling as well.
There, there's not a specific dollar amount because it depends on the size of your family.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Great, I've got Marie then Morse.
Um, I just want to say thank you. You've done an amazing job. Two seniors in my district probably would have exited their residence if they didn't enter the program. And there is, uh, I think, a five-year residency requirement, which is a good thing, so.
Right, and then if you sell your house, in between that time, you pay back a prorated rate?
Yes.
Thank you, Morse.
It's very helpful in rural areas of the county, you know, because you're dealing with the septic system as well as the well system. And that's where the trouble starts. You try to do it all on one piece of ground, maybe they only got to wait for the last. As we know, a septic system and a well is pretty hard to deal with sometimes. And that's where the planning department has done a great job and, uh, and as well as David continually tries in his position to get grants for sewer lines or water lines in various areas. And then try to get all the partners. I had one of them is in Granby, uh, an abandoned railroad system of CSX. We can't put water in because they're so tough, uh, went under the railroad tracks, that it's just about stopped everything.
Yeah, and, and just to close this up, a couple of vote here, but it would be maybe that when we do have this public information time, bring up kind of, you know, who we've helped and what, maybe what news. Maybe have a handout with legislators who haven't heard that. I know we've talked about in the past, maybe just a nice little summary of, you know, which neighborhoods, how many, and the total amounts. Because we do see this, not every year, but we've seen it a number of times if I've been here, so.
Well, I, if it would be helpful, we could identify places, um, but we're reluctant to, um, give the addresses or names.
No, of course, I'm more than like, you know, exactly. You know, in Granby, over the last twenty years, we've helped thirteen people for a total of this. Just something, I think, you know, it's, it puts a number on it. I think it's good for people to see that real benefit from this. So, all right, um, if there's nothing else, we'll call for vote, all in favor? Anybody to post? Okay, great, thank you, thank you, David. Okay, jumping down to the third one, take this one. Okay, resolution of appointing individuals to Oswego County Environmental Management Council. I think you saw the recommendation from the council, uh, with the resume there. As you know, the process works is that that group will put forward the recommendation and, uh, this, this group will then pass that recommendation up to the chairman to appoint the process. Uh, so I'm going to make that recommendation for a, uh, someone move that for me? What's that? I thought we were going to have a still point, but not in a point?
Table the resolution to appoint.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there is, there is a bit of a change. So we're going to look to table the changes to the, um, bylaws for now. We're going to do that the new year, is my understanding. And we're going to look to appoint under the current bylaws for now. Does that make sense, Chris?
Chris is not, but I can speak on that really quick. Um, this committee is currently, uh, under review right now. The bylaws have been established in two thousand and three. Um, we're looking at trying to make those compliant with environmental conservation law. Um, so to do this resolution, we would also have to have an additional resolution, have a change of bylaws. They're still in discussion about the committee's size for this. Um, so we prefer to table this now. Following this though, it would still be a recommendation to appoint under the current bylaws. So that way, that committee can make the forum at the end of this year.
Okay, thank you, Chris, that's excellent. Okay, uh, let me, I'll look for a motion for exception. Thank you, Morse, I have a second. And thank you. Any discussion? Okay, everybody kind of, Chris, I appreciate that, thank you. Um, okay, all in favor? Any votes? I think they'll appreciate that. Great, we'll jump to the last one here, Dave, if you want to.
Yes, um, so.
Again. Okay, so we voted to table that, oh, good, thank you, Chris. Um, so we, we'll start over again, I apologize. The motion that we are going to, can I, can we pull that back? We'll start over for a scratch here, because I want to try. We're going to vote to take with the vote to table.
You're voting to table, not to agree.
Correct, okay. So I'll look for a motion to table EP three.
Okay.
Thank you, please have a second. And thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, any votes? Okay, now I'm going to look for a motion to appoint the person who was recommended by the committee. If I have that motion.
I'll make that.
And thank you, please have a second.
Sorry.
All right, thank you, Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you, everyone, sorry about the mix up there. Okay, under, which I guess it would be the EP four.
EP four, yes. Um, this may have not been in your packet when it went out to you because it was submitted, uh, late last week. Uh, as a result of the governor's announcement on Thursday to, um, support, uh, just under twenty-eight million dollars worth of, uh, projects in Oswego County, um, through the READY program. And of those, about five point eight-three million are county-related projects. Um, this resolution authorizes the chairman to, uh, execute the documents necessary to accept and disperse the funds as those projects progress.
Yeah, those are, those are projects specifically, and you say county, you don't mean countywide, you mean those are the county of Oswego.
The county of Oswego, yes. So, uh, there's one that's, um, to do some repair stabilization and, um, fortification of County Route eighty-nine, which is the Lakeshore Road, um, in the town of Oswego where Rudy's is. And that goes from the, um, city limits, um, basically where the college property ends, um, and the town of Oswego starts. And down eighty-nine, past Rudy's, around the Esther Turn, and, um, up to, I believe, the bridge that goes over.
Lake Shore Drive.
Or me.
Lake Shore Drive.
I think it actually, this, this one, I think, stops at Jackem or right around that.
Right around.
Uh, is it before the bridge or after it? I thought, does it include the bridge?
I think it includes the bridge, yes.
So it's within sight of Lake Shore?
Yes, it is. But they didn't go fix the, you know, that area a little more, it gets higher, although that.
Right. Not much.
Not much. So the highway department may have a separate project that continues that, uh, Marine. But specifically, this one to fit in the READY program went along the lake into that bridge.
But if you remember, that, that stretch of eighty-nine has actually been scheduled to be repaved for the last two years, but because of.
It goes under a lot of.
Yes. So, we, this, hopefully, all that stuff will be done together. We're not going to pave it and then do the ready one.
Yeah, right. It's your help now.
All right, thank you, that's good, David.
Um, so another project is, um, the, to stabilize the, um, the bank and the bluff at Camp Palace. A project that we've been trying to, uh, get funded for many years. Uh, we're losing, uh, land there, uh, every year, and now the water's higher. We're continuing to lose more. And as that, um, pulls away, we're getting closer to the leach field for the septic system out there. So, um, this, uh, it's, I think, around five hundred thousand, um, is allocated for that. I don't know that we'll need all that. Um, also, there's, uh, the youth bureau maintains a trail system in the town of Scribo called Independence Park. And, um, with the higher water, there's been, uh, parts of that trail system that were undermined. And it's about twenty-four more years old. So there's some, uh, boardwalks and things in there that need to be elevated and, and repaired. Uh, there's money for that. Um, there is a retaining wall at the end of County Route five in the town of Richland. County Route five goes, uh, down to the lake from, um, if you turn left, heading north, if you turn left down Route five, you end up at the South Kirk Lighthouse. Um, there, there's work to, um, do an assessment of that retaining wall, see if it's been damaged by the higher waters and make some repairs. Um, and then, uh, potentially, um, there's a discussion to close, um, about a city block of County Route five and reroute, uh, local, uh, traffic around a different way. And that retaining wall may or may not be transferred out of county hands into private hands, uh, at that time as part of that project. But, um, before we did that, this, um, funding will help make sure that that wall is safe and will continue to protect, uh, the road and the lighthouse property. And then the last one is, um, a bridge at the end of County Route fifteen in the town of Sandy Creek. Um, for some reason, uh, it's been given the name of the YMCA bridge. Uh, I don't find any YMCA's nearby there, but, um, that's what it's called. It's at the very end of County Route fifteen and it connects, um, it, it crosses, uh, creek, if you will, that connects the North Sandy Pond and South Sandy Pond. And on the opposite side of, uh, County Route fifteen is Sandy Island Beach State Park. Um, during, with the higher water, um, there's been, uh, potentially some undermining there. It's difficult to get boats underneath that bridge as when the water's high. So people who are on the North Pond can't get to the South Pond and vice versa. And if you're on the South Pond, you can't get to Lake Ontario if you can't get under that bridge with your boat. So there's, uh, four million dollars, uh, available to take a look at that project.
Okay, uh, let me, let's do, this is, um, this is, I'll, I'll look for a motion. And motion, thank you, second. Troy, perfect. All right, any discussion? I'm going to go to the committee and then frankly, we'll get you in. Ed, go ahead, sir.
Well, first off, I'd say thank you for your involvement, but as I know, it's taken a lot of time, it's been many, many meetings. Um, the, regarding the five percent local match, did we get an answer from the state yet? If they have in-kind services, uh, perhaps our community department, how we, our, uh, account for that?
Uh, they've said, um, along that in-kind, uh, can count. What they haven't said to us is, um, with respect to the, um, private business and the homeowners, uh, they haven't given real clarification about what kinds of in-kind they'll accept. But from a government side, pretty much, it's, uh, status quo with most grants. Whatever we would do for like a DOT grant would be acceptable for this grant as well.
Okay. Frank, go ahead. The bridge that you're talking about there at Sandy Pond, that's going to be how much?
There's four million allocated for it. I don't know that it's going to take four million. It's a really, um, difficult piece of property. It's very narrow there. And there's a grade change between, um, the, um, east side of the bridge and, uh, well, I guess the south side of the bridge or the north side of the bridge. Uh, there's, there's a pretty good grade change. There's there's a pretty good grade change. And there's private property butted right up against it, so it might require some property acquisition as well.
The only reason I asked is I remember that bridge from nineteen sixty-five, and, you know, of course, then the boats weren't as big as they are now.
Right.
If you get underneath it then, but I realize with boats being bigger now, probably can't get them. How do you see four million dollars that I allocated? But, you know, it's, you know, it's a good thing, because the otherwise, you've got to go through the channel up on the, is it the north? The North Pond or the South Pond? Should go all the way around through the lake and get back over to the other pond. Yeah, it's a good tourism thing to, you know, economic development thing to do, so, yeah. You have to do it at some point in time.
There's also some concern because over the last few years, as the state and the town have tried to make repairs from high-water damages, there's been a lot of heavy truck traffic going over that bridge with riprap and loads of sand. And it's really just a box culver and some concrete blocks providing the approaches. So we're not really sure that it was designed to handle that kind of traffic. So a good part of this project is to do a good assessment and make sure that it's safe.
There's a state-owned public beach on the other side now, too. It used to be county, and now it's been through the state. It gives access to that. Does the county road still go all the way down to the water? I know it doesn't, I know it's not paved all the way down, but back in nineteen sixty-three, sixty-four, it, you know, it used to go right straight down through, and the people would walk down through, say, well, you can't charge me because this is a county road. I'll walk down it if I want it. Just step off, or you get charged.
I don't know where the road ends for sure, but I know that in the beginning of this discussion on this project, there was some debate about whether we own the bridge or the state owned the bridge. Where where did our ownership terminate? And there was a document from several years ago from the county attorney affirming that at least the bridge belonged to us. How far beyond that, I can't say for sure.
Okay. Anything else? This, ready? I mean, this is, it's, this is an exciting amount of money coming in here. I appreciate that the way it was written may allow us to build back better. A lot of these times, they give you enough just to make it the way it was, which isn't exciting if you really believe this is the new normal, this is what we're going to see every year. So I'm encouraged to see additional funds to make it be able to stand out. You hate to see us put this kind of money into it only to have it washed away again. So that's encouraging. Dave, thank you again for all the work you put in this. I know this was a labor of love for you, but also many, many, many hours. Thank you for that. Okay, anything else? I'll look for a vote. All paper? Hi, any votes? Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Dave. I think that's the end of our negotiations. So we can jump right to department updates. Dave has graciously offered to do his updates at the end, since he's forced to be here through the whole thing regardless. So why don't we jump right to our advisory boards? And Mike, if you want to do your budget review right after your update, you can. That way, also, sit up here and, I mean, what up to you, however you want to do it, but feel free.
What you want it to be done, we will do it. Okay. As you all know, Fulton, in round four of the DRI competitions, was awarded thirty million dollars. More enhancement, improvement of the state's economic development, other benefits as well. The announcement came on August fourteenth. We had a kickoff meeting with the governmental officials that worked with the community on September twenty-fifth. Those agencies are primarily the state development, Department of State, HCR, and DOS, Department of State. And they were all here. We had a meeting with a core group of the DRI, had a tour of the location and the boundaries of the DRI, and reviewed all of the twenty-six projects that were included in the DRI application as to where they were and discuss those projects. That was the first meeting. And the Fulton, they looked at their DRI application. I mean, it was very, very comprehensive, twenty-six projects, and a lot of projects. Those projects, if they're built out, include about sixty million dollars of investment in the Fulton area. And they really range from healthcare to manufacturing, to public facilities, to libraries, to banquet breakfasts, to improvements to restaurants. So it's a good, good, good mix of projects. The next round, the meeting number one of the DRI took place on October tenth. That was a meeting in which the local planning committee was formed and appointed. People that are on that committee, and there's twenty-two, were vetted by the state, and they were all authorized to serve on the local planning committee. I can read through those if you want to read, won't be too, but I can avoid that that time to be. But it's a, it's a good assortment of people from the Fulton area. The co-chairs of that that committee, I'm co-chair with Don Patrick, who's president of the county council. One reason why I'm co-chair is that the state requires that one member of the Association of Central Economic Regional Economic Development Council, which I am. I was also co-chair with the one at Oswego as well. But we're pretty excited about things getting getting going on this tomorrow night. And you have a little file that I passed around tomorrow night at six o'clock at the municipal building, City Hall. There's, it will be what we call the first public engagement meeting. Cameron Engineering out of Long Island is the consulting firm that's been assigned to Fulton for this project. They will be there making a kind of an overview, presentation on all projects. There will be displays of the easels with pictures and some data, some information on all of the twenty-six projects. The purpose of that meeting is really to introduce the projects that are being proposed and get comment from the citizens of the Fulton area. It'll be about a two-hour session. I would encourage anybody who wants to make some comments and have some input. This process, there'll be a number of public engagement sessions sessions going on throughout. And there'll be a number of, probably on a monthly basis, LPC committee meetings as well. The role of the LPC basically would be making the final recommendation. Granted, the state has the final okay to any funding for any project. They have to sign off on it. The LPC committee's responsibility is to evaluate all potential projects and and provide some type of recommendation to the state in order to finalize the project. Ultimately, that will be awarded funding to the DRI process. Now, at the first LPC committee meeting, we did agree and provide an open window for other potential projects to be submitted. The deadline for that is the eighth of November. So even though we got twenty-six projects, it's still allowed for developers or other potential projects to step forward if their project is a realistic project that could fall in line with the implementation phases of this project. We anticipate, and we, Oswego was a guinea pig, being the first in this program. It is moving, I can state, because I've been involved with both of them, quicker, much quicker now than it did in round one and round two and even round three. We hope to be able to finalize the process of collecting the projects, hopefully by the end of next summer. I think it took a little over a year for Oswego to get to that point. And work cannot begin on any of these projects. That would be subject to reimbursement by the DRI. So that's, that's an issue. So timing is an issue with some projects. Some projects may fall out because of that issue. Other projects may come in. So we think it'll be a good meeting and going to ask questions. And probably be about a two-hour, two-hour session tomorrow.
Like the, the boundary is set, correct? At this point, the boundary can't move, and that is the DRI boundary? Is that fair?
Well, yes and no. The boundaries are identified in the application. If during this process, there is something maybe contiguous that would be a project that would be strongly supported by the LPC, you might be able to. But it it can't be on the other side of the river. It can't be for the north. I mean, the northern boundaries is pretty much blocked. I mean, something contiguous, like something contiguous to the Nestle side or something like that, one block, and there was a terrific project that would be great for the community. We think it hasn't been stated that we could, but it could be considered.
I know with the Oswego project, there were a number of them that kind of came in later in the game at this part. They weren't in the initial piece. You had mentioned that the eighth is kind of the drop dead date for adding new ones. Is there still the ability? Because the meeting is the seventh, where everyone's going to come in. There might be some great ideas that come out of that meeting, but then they've got less than twenty-four hours of turning around.
Well, the this was announced, but the timeline for the opening was announced back at the first meeting.
Sure. If people show up who maybe hadn't been at the first meeting, see this and say, hey, I got this great idea. Okay. So so that, you're saying the eighth is the drop dead regardless? Is that a fair statement?
I'm going to never say something that's drop dead regardless.
Okay.
It could be a little bit more, I mean, if there was a fifty million dollar project that came to town, and wanted to build on the Nestle site, and that shows up and is viable and is real, I think there could be some movement.
But when you say that the list will be finalized in the summer, that really means, though, that will be windowed down from the current list. You don't look to be adding anything over the summer.
No, 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 no. I mean, I would say for anything to be added on, pretty much all the requirements in terms of submitting data, information on the project, except will have to be done soon.
Okay.
Certainly by mid-December or so.
Great. Mind if I take some questions on that? Mike, if you have a question to add?
Well, yeah, on that, I was going to just give you a brief summary of this CFA.
Yeah. And did you have a question on that?
Yeah, the company that was assigned to is an engineering firm.
Yeah.
They also was one that was assigned to Portland.
Who's assigned?
State. And they're paid for out of the ten millions. Their fee is three hundred thousand dollars. So actually, you don't have nine point seven three million distributed.
Frank, go ahead, sir.
Just two, the time that you have here, Mike, is different than the time that was advertised. Time that was advertised is from four to six. The only reason I know that is because I put it out.
That was the first meeting.
No, no, this is the meeting that's supposed to be coming up from four to six.
No, that's always been the time that we've discussed, starting at six, to allow people to get after after work. The LPC meeting was four o'clock.
Right.
And the next one, I think, is four. Yeah, all the LPC meetings are probably going to be around four o'clock.
Which is the, which is the group that was.
And all public engagement meetings are probably, and that's the way Oswego did it. They did them, they did them all in the early evening.
All right. Second, the the co-chair, not yourself, the co-chair, is that always going to be the president of the county council? Because it could change, you know, in January, as to who the.
The the co-chair normally is the mayor. Mayor Woodward assigned and delegated that to Don Patrick as president because of his health, and because he was also leaving office.
I I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, in January, you're going to have a new mayor, and you may have a new president of the county council, because Don Patrick is a Democrat, and it's going to be a Republican stronghold as far as the council. So I just, I just wonder, you know, what I'm saying is, is it going to change?
I would say.
Would it change, or is it going to still be, you know, Don Patrick, even though he doesn't really have any authority or anything within the thing? And you have a new mayor sitting there that would want to be on that possibly or something else? That's all I'm asking.
The.
We can, I can ask it at the meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
But bottom on, bottom line is, the co-chairs are appointed by the state. And could the state appoint the new mayor as a co-chair, and Don stays on the LPC committee as a member? That that could happen, or vice versa? I'm sure the new mayor will be heavily involved.
Right, I'm sure she will.
Yes, thank you, Frank. Thank you. All right, no other questions? Mike, we can move on to the next one there, sir.
Well, I just wanted to give everybody a little bit of an update on the CFA process. In terms of ESDC funding, there were four projects that made the priority list. And those projects were a new building being developed by Construction Design and Management, Inc., on the Nestle site that is already kind of under construction right now. That building will house charter or spectrum communications. So it's a developer that will be leasing that facility. It's going to be a nine thousand square foot building. The primary warehousing and office space, it will not be a retail store for Spectrum. And there will be probably about thirty-five people employed down there. Another project that was on the priority list is the proposed thirty thousand square foot manufacturing starter facility to be constructed also on the Nestle site by the IDA. That was another one. The third one that was on the priority list was Lydell Company, manufacturing company, used to be Interface Solutions. They are in the mix for setting up, establishing a new line, production line. It's one that's been decommissioned for a number of years. They want to start that up again, because they are going to be expanding back again into making backing, floor backing. They do automotive gaskets and things like that as well. So that's, that's another project. And the last one that was on the priority list was a feasibility study from Port Authority on the possibility of establishing a amphitheater-type project in the city of Oswego. Those projects combined, the total asked from the CFA is about one point nine million. Total cost of those projects are nine point two million. In addition to that, the listing of projects that I've been able to identify right now that were non-ESDC. that were non-ESDC funding, uh, there were nine projects, uh, priority projects for the county, including, uh, a number of feasibility studies funded by DEC, uh, one to the village of Mexico, a sewer study by Sandy Creek. Another DEC, uh, project is, uh, the bridge, uh, on Thompson Road in town of Oswego. And another one, uh, also in town of Oswego, uh, is, uh, the sewer project involving Red Hanks Boulevard. That was on the list. Now, I'm saying on the list doesn't mean they're gonna get funded. I mean, you don't know, you don't get funded until December. But if you're not on the list, it's unlocked, you're gonna get funded. Fulton, uh, had a project in, uh, associated with a library, uh, which the HCR funded. Village of Cleveland, uh, had a project HCR funded, uh, for water system improvements. Village of, uh, Phoenix, uh, had a project, uh, that would be redeveloping a few buildings and to make use, uh, on Main Street, uh, in the village, uh, about 12 commercial spaces and 10 apartments. Parks, uh, uh, project with private park improvements, uh, the pavilion project in the city of Oswego. And in Redville, uh, I don't know how they do it, but they keep, consistently keep doing it. They got some funding for parks for, uh, trail grooming equipment. And, uh, then that's pretty much, but that, that combined, uh, that and the other projects combined, uh, were represented about $5.4 million, uh, to the county and, uh, about $21 million in project costs. So, uh, just as a side note, two of those projects that he mentioned, the sewer, um, project in town of Oswego was funded through the READY program, um, which is very beneficial to them because that'll be a 5% match instead of what would have maybe been a 50 or, or 60% match. Four, I think 4.8 million, they got through the READY program for that. Fred Hanks Bull, Boulevard and down along County Route 89, uh, that was funded through the READY program. And the study in Sandy Creek, um, was also funded, um, through the READY program. $200,000 for them to do their feasibility, prepare their engineering, uh, and get all the documents together so they'd be positioned to apply for actual grants to start building, uh, sewer system up there.
Uh, there was some discussion about whether or not READY money could be used as the match portion of another awarded project. Was there ever any decision on that?
Um, I think it depends on the source of the funds. So READY uses a lot of different money from various, uh, funding sources. And, uh, some you can match state against state. You can usually match federal against state. It really depends on what the grant program is that you have and what piece of the READY money, uh, is coming into that puzzle.
So if it was the same department that funded it through READY, it most likely would not allow it to match it for another grant to that same department.
Yeah, so like if it was environmental protection fund money, uh, you couldn't apply the two against each other. Well, that's not unusual for, uh, let's say, to play cards here. A number of the CFA projects that were approved back in round, around six, I think, ultimately got moved from normal CFA funding to URI funding. So it's, it's a slide in hand.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Uh, anybody else have any questions as far as that goes? A lot of exciting projects there. Hopefully more money coming into our area. So, thank you, Mike. If nothing else, Mike, you wanna jump into your, we're, we're gonna go into the budget request stuff now. Do you want to go into your budget piece now, as long as you're already up the table?
If no one objects, if I don't say by standing up and objecting, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, everybody got, uh, the proposal, uh, in terms of the budget. It's, uh, um, it's in the county's perspective. This is, that's I don't have, what was it, 2019 and 2018. And the, the budget itself, uh, you know, we have experienced some growth and a couple of successes of the SBA 504 program, doing some big projects like, uh, Thunder Island and the Holiday Express. Haven't closed on it yet, but, uh, the ad reach project can hold. Uh, but when we close on that, uh, we have, and that will help us in raising more money from administrative associated costs and doing the 504 programs, uh, that will help, you know, offset some of the changes and increases and line item of funding, uh, that we can cover with that source of funds. Yeah, I'll be happy to address any questions you may have, uh, pertaining to the, uh, my, I don't know.
All right. I, I do wanna also highlight and actually thank Mike for the work he's done with the 504 loan. And again, that's a cast in his versions on previous folks. There's a new gentleman who you have hired to be the, uh, to handle the 504 program, Kevin Lamontaine. And I think he personally has done a really great job. The process seems to be moving quicker than ever before. He's moving.
Don't we got pizza dough?
So I, I do wanna just bring forward that it is, it is, um, it's encouraging to see that there's some big projects that are moving quicker. Uh, and that's always been a bit of a complex process, so it's encouraging.
Well, it still is a complex process, but, uh, we have been able to, uh, I think, expedite the process significantly. And, uh, and we're out constantly, you know, working with the banks and looking to do more 504, 504 funding. But the advantage of the 504 funding is that a bank does 50% of the mortgage or the equipment or whatever is being done on, on a project. We can do it up to 40% in a subordinated position at comparable interest rates. Or in some cases, better interest rates in second position. And it reduces the requirement of the business to only put in 10% equity instead of maybe 20% equity. So it's, uh.
It's a great program and it helps the bank, it helps encourage the banks to be able to lend maybe in places they wouldn't have been able to by offsetting a little bit their liability as well. So, uh, great program. Glad to see it really picking up, so. Uh, with that, if there's any, any questions, again, the, the budget request is the same as the previous year. Uh, there is a summary of a lot of the projects that have been done, like this here every month, giving us an update of also the projects that are being completed. So, uh, is there any discussion or questions for Mike? If not, then I will. Oh, I almost didn't even see it. I'm so sorry. It's like always there.
No, I just have a quick question. Mike, was there, um, did Mackenzie Childs get involved in this?
Mackenzie Childs, uh, we were contacted, uh, that there was some interest in Mackenzie Childs moving, uh, some of its operations.
A warehouse, correct?
Where it's a warehouse, it's not a, uh, manufacturing facility, it's a warehousing facility. They were leasing a building. We had a 200,000 square foot warehouse that would be used to store documents. It's always been used for it. So Mackenzie Childs will be leasing that facility, uh, develop, they gotta develop a new parking lot for it. The challenge is they're gonna have, it's starting out around 15 employees and I think they'll go to 100 employees.
Well, I'm a huge buyer for years and years. Yes, you can. Every year that might be a sales tax revenue stream because they have a warehouse sale, people come.
They have a warehouse sale, okay. But it's not gonna be a regular store.
No, I understand that, but there are warehouse sales and I just think it's very profitable.
Well, the, the competition was, they had no choice. They were out of space. The only way they could get more space in the Auburn area was build new. They didn't wanna do that. So they were looking, we were competing with basically Geneva, Geneva and us, uh, for the project. And I, and I really appreciate, and one issue with them was they knew that some of the employees from the, uh, community, if they live in the Auburn area, uh, is workforce. And we got Chris and Bob sitting down, talking to them about the availability of the workforce and the pay scales and stuff. And that was a big factor in helping them make a decision as to us or Geneva.
So where's the location of the warehouse?
It's on Great Bear Road. Great Bear Road has the old Owens Brookway building.
Okay.
Which is owned by Doty Construction. And there's a building to the west that was built initially for additional warehousing for Owens Brookway by DIIT Structures. And the building's been sold a couple of times, uh, since OI, uh, Owens Brookway left. Good shape. Uh, they don't really have too much to, to the building other than beefing up the restrooms and stuff, because it was just purely a warehouse and bottles and stuff.
Right.
And so, uh, and the developer, uh, owns the building. Obviously the key to getting it over here and to negotiating the terms of the lease. We were involved a little bit with the town and the town planning board and the, this lot of wood and stuff. And helping through the planning process because it will be some construction. Not so much to the building as yet, but to the park, uh, outside parking lot. They had cut a new road into Great Bear, uh, for ingress and egress from the parking lot.
That's exciting. That's great news.
No, I just wanna, we'll be, uh, my wife will be by it.
Get your wad, right?
You guys have been camped out there the night before. Uh, Frank, go ahead, sir.
Several questions on the source of revenues here. Which one is the revenue from, uh, 10% of the pilot?
None.
Not in here as a revenue?
No.
Let's put it in the treasurer's. What, Michael's in, in treasurer's office? Pilot revenue is in treasurer's office. And the 10%? About 10%? It goes directly to them.
Goes to the IDA.
Goes to the IDA.
But it's money that is used to help finance businesses, uh, via leases and stuff like that. None of that money is used by any type of operator operating this, for either agency.
All right, uh, having been at the NISAC meeting, I just was wondering, and I'd asked before, Phil, how do we get out of that 10%? Because at NISAC, they were again astounded that we give 10% and some do, won't give 1% of that. So how do we, as a county, can we progress to that point where other counties in the state are? With us being the only one giving 10% of the pilot.
You don't, you don't know that for sure.
Well, I, well, let's put it this way, out of the, out of the NISAC meeting, there's people all sitting around in about 30 different counties represented. And I'm sorry, they're lying to me then.
I'm not saying they're lying. I said, you don't know what's going on.
Well, I, I know what they told me, okay? That's all I'm saying. And the people, when I, when I did my survey four years ago, five years ago, when this was brought forward out of the 56, there wasn't a single one of them that were getting 10%. Okay, I'm sorry, but, you know, you, you can say that, you know, like you said, then, well, those counties are different than ours. Well, I'm sorry, 10% of the pilot repayment of money should be, you know, we could use that someplace else, you know, I don't wanna say. We're still one of the highest, we're still one of the highest in unemployment, we're still one of the highest in poverty. And what are we gaining?
Yeah, and I think, and that's a fair question. As legislators, we should ask every, every dollar spent, what are we doing on it? And I think that that's a fair question to ask, Frank. And, and I know that, uh, Mike does provide, and then again, this is more of an IDA question, this is not through this budget. Uh, but Mike does and has provided the work that has been done out of that money. What, what is that money buying? I mean, it's not directly funded by IDA or anything like that, but what has come out of that? And there are a number of projects over the last four years, I mean, there's about 15 or 16 of them, that have been funded out of that money. So, uh, the question shouldn't, I don't think we should say, you're getting this money, you shouldn't. What we should say is, you're getting this money, what are we getting for it? That's a fair question. I think it's our responsibility to ask that. And I think that there's a pretty exclusive list of some of the things that came out of that. Uh, but it's a fair question and I think it's something, you know, you should see those results.
Well, let me, let me clarify too. I mean, I think there's a big, big misperception. Because every year, and Marie, you can do, you can go on our website, the IDA website, look up our audits, there are reports in the audit. At the back of the audit, there's one that's called the supplemental report. It's a schedule of all leases and all straight lease transactions, every company listed. It has detailed information on the term of the lease. It, it outlines the employment of the facility for any ID assistance, the current employment of the facility. And it also compares, uh, what normal taxes would be without a pilot and what the pilot payment is on every project. And that's in the audit every year. And mathematically, if I can find it here real quick. The currently, with all the pilots in place, the total exemption of all the pilots is 26% of normal. So they paying 70, almost 74% of the normal, of the normal tax. So it's about a quarter. So it's not like where it's 75, 90%, you know. There are phases with projects where it's 75% they've been on, on new projects. Or on an expansion project is, is a 75% of the incremental increase in assessment. So it's not as some people may think that the county gets nothing, the county's getting 75% of it. Well, 75% of the county chair, about 60% goes to school districts.
Phil, you still didn't answer my question. How would we get out of that? It's either set by local law or resolutions, so the legislature would have to vote to amend or rescind those. Okay. Second part of my question here now is, I see the city of Fulton is the only one that's, uh, contributing here with some money here. I was just wondering, Mike, would the city of Fulton be the only one?
You asked the city of Fulton, I guess.
Okay, well, they say it's because you're promoting the city of Fulton. I thought that's what you're supposed to do. The city of Fulton's in the county.
Well, we're doing a lot of good things.
Well, that's, you know, that's still, it's what's, you're, what they say is, it's for you to promote the city of Fulton, okay? And I just don't see, you, you do a lot for Oswego, you do a lot for Hannibal, you do a lot for all the different villages and towns in the other city. But city Fulton is the only one that's giving you 10,000,000.
I think it's a fair question that, uh, if the city of Fulton doesn't feel that that money is what we're spending, that goes through their budget.
Well, they're afraid, they're afraid that the IDA won't help them, okay, or the operations sort of.
To be fair, you, you, yeah, I was gonna say, if you look at, if you look at.
I think they wanna be a partner.
Yeah, and if you look at the list of where these projects have been funded, it's in a lot of areas that aren't actively funded, especially in Oswego County. So, um, my, my hope would be that that would continue, but I understand your question.
So I'm hoping the new mayor doesn't come through.
All right. Uh, were you to the question?
Um, this is just a question I, I might have put out there. I looked through all the numbers. It seems if we merged printing and publications, like the college has a department hiring a graphic printer to handle every publication in our county, that we might save money. I mean, I, I can't, they have, they'll help me gather every single publication. I'm, I'm seeing tons of reproduction and printing numbers. And I just, the college, it's done their own for our.
Well, we do, we do, uh, 90% of any of our publications done in-house. We don't outsource it.
I'm saying of all.
Sometimes printing we outsource. We have to outsource the printing of it, but we don't.
And Marie, your point is, it is kind of a bigger one. You see that line in every. And Marie, your point is, is kind of a bigger one, you see that line in every one of these budgets.
Yes.
Is there a way to maybe have, you know?
Like a shared service type of thing, everybody.
Put them all together.
Now, I don't know that this one would make sense, it's essentially not for profit, but maybe there is a bigger story to look at.
I, I just would love to know the numbers either way.
And actually, Muniz will provide you a summary of everyone's reproduction.
Reproduction, printing, brochure, I mean, every single thing, it just seems like maybe, you know.
Thank you.
Uh, Boris.
Well, I'll get on my man ranking, but I want you to know that this is one of the best agencies in the five county region. Activity in Oswego counties last year was higher than the five Corrigan counties. We were, we were number one. Maybe people don't think things are being done, but they are being done. And one of the big issues is infrastructure and so on, as you well know, sites like the Nestle site is a mess at this point in time. Has to be cleaned up and for fabrication of any kind of building. So not only say we've got, we have one of the best organizations doing it, I'm very proud to be on the I D A along with Tim. And we do a lot of projects, and I think we're moving ahead of the good equipment, doing a lot for the community.
Yes, go ahead, Roy.
Morris, I mean, I'm not gonna argue that point with you, but I would like to say going forward, any projects, anything that's done, must contain an exit plan with skin in the game, possibly escrowed by that company, so that we're not left with an ungodly mess, and there are several of them laying around for us to clean up. So I just think that's an important thing to think about going forward.
You're talking about the Nestle plant, sorry?
I, I'm talking about several manufacturing abandoned areas that, you know, they just, they leave them.
You mean like a decommissioning plant or something?
Yeah, decommissioning fee, hold it escrow, so it holds their toes to fire, if, you know. I mean, to be left with a Nestle site, that was unbelievable.
It's gotta be tough too, I mean, I don't know, is that, is that, is that something where, I mean, is that industry standard? Or you've seen that in any other, it's tough, because we're, we're doing everything, and we bring these folks in, and I get your point for sure, but we also want to be able to say to them, you know, is, is thirty years of great development work, potentiality that they could leave us? It's tough, but I, I always agree with you.
I mean, in most cases, I mean, there are cases in which a plant is left, walked out on like Nestle did. However, uh, but on the flip side of that, we are doing that, we're doing that with the solar projects. Uh, we're requiring them to have basically an insurance policy that when they close up, uh, that stuff is gonna be removed. And they've been agreeing to have that, that's not a big thing, if you're building, you ask Novellus to do something like that, I mean, it's, uh, I don't think it's gonna be perceived as a very business friendly community, you don't trust us, why don't you trust you?
Well, it's definitely a fair point to bring up, but the situation, yes, sir.
Yeah, I would like, sometimes it's too hard in this meeting to talk to you about things like this. I was involved in the Nestle plant, and one of the biggest issues that came up, the I D A did bid on it. And the guy who knocked it down bid four hundred thousand dollars more, and that's what happened.
Well, he did bid on it, the guy who knocked it down didn't put a nickel in it.
All right, let's, if it's, we have a lot to go there, I appreciate everybody's time here, it's a great conversation, thank you, thank you so much. And I know Mike is readily available, and his cell phone number is posted everywhere on the internet, so feel free to give him a call.
If you wanna come and sit down with us and talk to us about that stuff, I'm happy to do it, you know.
Okay, great, Mike, thank you, there's nothing further, do I need to move this, or? We need to move it, okay, can I really make a motion to, can I make a motion? Somebody else can make a motion, thank you, Roy, to move it as, as requested, we have a second? I'll say it. Thank you, Ed, any further discussion? No? All in favor? All right. Thank you, Michael, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, we'll jump to the next one in line. Regional planning, Mr. Botsar, welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Come on up to the table.
Thank you to be here.
You didn't actually ask if anybody was opposed.
They didn't, that's okay.
Thank you, sir.
He is not.
For the record. All right, I apologize, thank you, Roy, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Please say it.
All right.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, thank you, Botsar, go ahead.
Thank you, good morning, everyone, good to be here this morning. Need a chance to give you a brief update on the regional planning board and what we've seen today and the work we're planning to do in the coming year. I think most of you know me, I've been in the regional planning board quite a while, I'm the director. We are a public planning and development agency, we're really part of a network, I like to put it this way, of agencies and organizations to supplement the resources that the county has in the Commonwealth. We serve a five county area, so we're based in the city of Syracuse, in Islandbugge County, in the north, in the Cayuga County, Portland, Madison, Islandbugge, and here in Oswego County. We work in several program areas, we have small staffs, we're a small organization, our internal operating budget is a little over a billion dollars. We currently have eight full-time staff positions for the agency. We get our financial support, the base of our financial support comes from our five member counties. And we use your funding primarily to secure other federal and state grants. Where many of those grants require a local match, and that's where the county funds are critical for us to secure the balance of the equity fund. So, you know, eighty percent, your twenty percent funding allows us to leverage the other eighty percent. So we've been very, very successful in operating that way for many years. We're focused on several key program areas, we have been for a while, we'll certainly continue in these program areas into twenty twenty. We have a very small economic development program, do a lot of work with Mike's office. And certainly with David across all of our program areas. Environmental planning, energy has been an active program that I talked about for the last few years before meeting at this group. And some land use companies, planning, community revitalization, that kind of all gets linked together. And a little bit of transportation planning. So those are our major program areas, and if you can just envision, small staff, eight, eight people currently. Eight, nine, ten people, it's been where our staffing level has been the last few years. We've got one or two people working in each of these program areas, there's, there is some over that, but. We have limited resources, we try to deploy them in a way where we can be effective, productive, and provide service value to each of our member counties. And I think we've been successful in doing that, certainly in recent years. Our economic development program, historically, we've done a fair amount of securing federal and state grants for infrastructure work for various projects around the region. We had, years ago, we set up a small business loan program. These were basically capitalized with federal and state funds that had to go to a regional organization. So we stepped up and secured those funds. So we make loans to small businesses across the region. This past year, our lending activity hasn't, you know, it's been, we do somewhere in the range of ten to fifteen loans a year. It's a very small program. One of the things we were successful this year is bringing some additional funding, some additional capitalization in the program. So we got five hundred million dollars from the State Job Development Authority for an agriculture loan program. So we now are able to operate in this region, an agriculture loan program. And then we also got another half million dollars from New York State Department of Ag markets, to be able to make grants to agriculture businesses, food processors in the region. And we made a grant award to Mickle Hollow Farms, I believe over in the Hannibal area, for fifty thousand dollars for some processing equipment improvements. A couple of years ago, we did a loan to D and D Logging and another one to Catfish Bank. So those are just examples of what we can do out of our small business loan program. It's primarily manufacturing oriented, and we're getting into agriculture, obviously. But our loans are typically, you know, twenty-five thousand up to a hundred, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we're usually filling in a gap in financing for the business. So a bank might do fifty thousand, if they want to buy a, company wants to buy a piece of equipment, maybe the bank can do fifty thousand. I mean, we come in with twenty-five thousand dollars, and the business puts in maybe twenty-five, is that what it means? So this is an example that there are other small business loan programs, certainly the major player in this county is the I D As and Mike's group. And many times, on occasion, we're doing loans in partnership with Mike's organization. So that's, you know, just a quick look at our economic development program. We just touched briefly on our land use comprehensive planning. In this case, it's primarily one staff member, Gene Wright, on our staff. And we've certainly been working very closely with Phil and David and the National American Heritage Sanctuary nomination to NOAA. We've been a partner, trying to lend some assistance to the county in that effort. There's certainly been some very positive announcements this year, this past summer. And we're trying to continue to follow the tracking that nomination. And we actually, Congressman Cacko spoke at our annual meeting just this past week. This was one of the initiatives in this region, certainly in this county, that he mentioned in his keynote remarks. So we're trying to lend support to, to the county's efforts. We were also successful, this is a year and a half ago at this point, securing a fairly large grant from the state, upwards of six hundred thousand dollars for a major sidewalk improvement project in the Polansky community, to bring pedestrian access out to the high school complex in the community. Still working with the village and the community to secure the management funds that are required for that grant. But that's an example where we take our comprehensive planning work, and we try to do the next step, which is, as projects are identified, work with the community or a developer in some cases, and secure the funds to actually implement the projects that are recommended in the comprehensive planning. Another example that certainly I worked itself a point, a number of you, Ed is certainly very much aware, David, Phil. We've been working with the property owner, the lighthouse, Mike Barnell and his group. Learning more and more about the historic significance of that site. And we have, a number of years ago, secured some state funds to do some very focused legal work related to title access issues. David mentioned the possibility of perhaps moving county group five. There are a lot of I D As being discussed in the community, and what we're trying to do is bring to the table some factual information so that we might be, we as a community, you as a county, you know, to really realize the full potential of that site in the community. And Mr. Barnell has certainly been a very active, willing participant in that effort. Certainly the county has as well, and we're continuing to certainly be a point person in moving that budget along. So that's certainly another example in our comprehensive program area. I could go on with a few other examples there, but let me just, just jump over to the energy program. We have a couple of staff people who work in this program area, we get a fair amount of money from the state, Energy State Energy Research and Development Authority, primarily to pay staff time to pursue energy efficiency initiatives across the region, and certainly here in Oswego County, and also renewable energy work. We were able to use our staff resources to help a number of communities here in Oswego County over the past couple of years. Secure state grants totaling over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Primarily focused on municipal LED lighting improvements for these municipalities. So been working with Polaski, the town of Richland, the county of Granby, the village of Cleveland, the town of Oswego, Hannibal, both villaging town, as well as with the city of Oswego, Phoenix, Mexico, Paris. So we've been very, very active in helping these communities, one, secure the state grants, but to utilize these state grants to help underwrite the cost of the conversion of the municipal lighting to LED lighting. And those efforts, all of these communities that I just mentioned are either have completed LED lighting projects or will be shortly. And combine those projects that will allow these communities to realize really significant savings that are electric billed each month each year. So again, that's an example where we took a high-level energy plan for the region and recognized that municipalities simply didn't have the staff on board to work through the process with National Red and also getting these state grants. So we have one staff person, Amanda Mizony is like the expert on municipal LED lighting, and she's a resource available to all of you. We're continuing with our C M Y solar program, primarily focused on working with a particular company, Abundant Solar, based in Toronto, to deploy solar farms on municipally-owned property across the region. We hope to have some projects actually under construction this year, but it looks like the projects will get started in twenty twenty. And we're focused on about eight major projects right now, one of them here in Oswego County, the town of Richland. The town's, they have a sandy gravel pit that's pretty much mined out at this point, I believe over in the town of Elgin. And abundant solar has recently reached a lease agreement with the town of Richland, so that abundant solar can lease the property and build, I believe it's about a five megawatt solar farm, and what is really, you know, spent on gravel pit at this point. So it's where we have focused our effort in solar, there are a lot of solar companies going around, certainly active here in your county, working with your county I D A. What we are trying to do is direct some of that activity to this surplus, underutilized municipal property. So in this case, the municipalities are gonna realize some lease revenue. Not big numbers, but, you know, about a thousand dollars an acre, it seems to be the going rate that we're able to bring to the table. And we also worked out an arrangement with the abundant solar where, in addition to the lease payment, they're also making a pilot payment through, through the I D A. So what municipalities are realizing is the lease revenue, obviously a portion of the pilot revenue, and also the benefit to the local citizens of having access to solar power in their communities. It rates are, you know, ten to twenty percent below going rates to the National Red. So that has certainly been a major focus of our energy program the past couple of years, and will continue to be. SUNY Oswego recently reached out to us, we've been talking with them for quite a while. They're about to work on a very significant solar initiative on campus, and they have asked us to assist them in that effort. So that's a little bit more ambitious undertaking than what we're normally used to, but we're gonna be meeting with the folks from SUNY Oswego actually next week on that.
So, Mr. Botsar, that's awesome information, and I'm very excited about this, actually, what I would like to do is have you maybe come up and visit us and give us a real, you know, an update like this, with all the different groups we have today, and with another meeting following us here in a half hour. If we could get right to the budget, and what I would like to do is, again, extend an invitation for you to come up, there's another E D T meeting, we have a little bit more time, and give us, you know, additional updates like this, maybe six months from now or something like that. There's excellent information here, and I know everyone's very interested in it, it's great to hear what you're doing. But if we could just jump right to the budget, we'll. It's great to hear what you're doing, but if we could just jump right to the budget, we'll move from there, that's okay.
Making a level budget request to this committee and to the county. Sixty-four thousand, a little over sixty-four thousand dollars for the coming year. And some of you may recall, we had asked for a budget increase last year. And we understand that we would have to make a level budget request this year. And we're certainly able to do that, and we will be able to continue that for the foreseeable future. And we have overall operating budget, two million dollars. Our internal operating is a little bit over a million dollars. The balance of the funds is passed through to consultants for various consulting projects in the region.
Sure. What I will do then is let me look for a motion to discuss, if I could. Morris, in a second. All right, Marie, thank you. So any discussion? I will lead off with it. And I do appreciate all the information you brought forward last year. You did ask, obviously, for a bit of an increase and it was a tougher time. And, but I have to say, I was very impressed with the information that you were able to provide, that services you were able to provide throughout the county, services that we don't offer anywhere else or can't offer anywhere else. So I want to thank you for that and I look forward to hearing more updates like what you raised earlier. So Ed and Marie.
Please.
Go ahead, Marie.
Ed, then Marie.
Oh, you are. I think it is not going to address properly the LED situation in the county that we might be able to recoup the money you're asking for if we worked with this department on a complete LED conversion. I've really seen a huge difference in my own business.
Sure.
But the entire, all of our buildings converted would be huge and I appreciate you for bringing that up.
Just on that, we have done several buildings. Most of the work that Dave referred to is in street lighting. That's a particular program and the county has very limited amount of overhead, like streetlight.
But he said she is, he is an expert on LED, which I'm assuming could include buildings.
It could, certainly.
Absolutely, there are matches, there are matches out there. You could put twenty lights to one inch and that's an LED fixture. So, I mean, it's a huge, huge number.
Yeah, this, like this building's been done, health has been done, public safety center's been done. So we've been going down that road.
Building by building.
Yeah, well, this was earlier when there was a lot of money available. And I don't know what is in John Booker's plan to continue that, but we start, we've started down that road. It's no.
Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
First, thank you for the work you do. I bet you, there's a lot of challenges in New York State and in your organization, Mike says as well, to promote businesses to come here and give them that help of hand and pull a lot of those pieces together. And I certainly appreciate your fiscal responsibility with doing what you said you would in the budget. And maybe it's unfound, but I'm a little concerned with your financial help. And I looked at a couple of lines that drastically cut in your revenue as far as state aid and other revenues that were cut by sixty-six percent. Maybe you could just touch on what those are, my concerns warranted or not?
No, it's primarily, on a year-to-year basis, we secure grant funding for consultant studies, special purpose studies, one type or another. And so it.
So those flow then?
Those flow.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a good year, but it's all pass-through money.
Okay.
Certainly doesn't attract the internal operating capacity.
Good question.
I just wanted to mention that the county has benefited from our relationship specifically on our Bonney Sewer project, five hundred thousand dollar federal grant that we got. The only way we were eligible for that was to be in a cooperative management agreement with the regional planning board. So absent our participation with them, that's a half a million dollars we wouldn't have been able to get for that project.
Great point. Okay, any further questions, comments? Marie, do you have one there?
No.
Okay. All right, well, then I will look for a vote, all in favor? Any votes? Thank you. Thank you, David, I appreciate it. And then we'll set something up, have you come up and maybe in the spring and give us another updated video. All right, thank you again.
Thank you, David.
Okay, let us, I was going to say we'll go to regional transportation, but I assume we have, nobody here, as in every other year ever that I've been here. But we are mandated by law to fund this at the rate that we are funding it, so we will continue to fund it. Although, and we will hope to have representation on that board at some point. It'd be wonderful. Right, go ahead, sir.
I thought we didn't have to fund all of that. At some point in time there, I thought we said that we could choose to fund something to. You know, it's an announcement because I know that OCO lost, I think sixteen routes, routes out of their, because they lost the OI contract. And I was wondering what our responsibilities are and what we can help with that. Because that could help if they could go to reach, you know, out to the outer banks to be able to bring people into the city.
From what is listed in their article, it says that they are requesting ninety thousand five seventy-three, which is the current twenty-twenty mandated amount by New York State. So I assume that, unless you know anything other than that, Dave?
Yeah, so it is possible to opt out of a partnership with them, but you have to make up that service somehow. And whether you can do that for that amount of money or not is a question that, you know, deserves some significant feasibility review. But under the current legislation, this is based on the mortgage tax collections. That's our obligation to continue to participate with them. So if you wanted to have a different plan for providing transportation along those major routes, you could do that and not have Central as a partner, but it's not as easy as just saying, we don't want to give them the money anymore.
But it is part of a much bigger conversation that we are actually having. I know Super Curriers here today to discuss a little bit about their transportation process. I mean, Roy stepped out, but there's a very active transportation committee that's been working. The Anti-Poverty Collaborative, now called Lift Oswego County, has its own task force associated with this. So it is a very important discussion we've been having on the county level, throughout the county. It's not going to stop right here, but this is something where, yeah, we do hope to have representation soon on the board.
There was some issue through the governor's office with contacting one of the persons who was recently recommended to the governor. And that closed the loop on that communication. I think sometimes soon you might hear that we are represented on that board agreement.
So I look for a motion then, at the required funding amount. Anybody? All right, Morris, thank you. Thanks, Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor? I am opposed. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the Cornell Cooperative Extension. All here, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I realize I have the potential to sometimes be long-winded and everybody really wants to hear everything I have to say. But in the interest, in the interest of time, just a real quick, brief history. Cooperative Extension was established in nineteen fourteen here in Asuago County by an act of the Asuago County Legislature. We are not a service agency. We are an organization that has a federal mandate to provide education, research-based education directly to the people of Asuago County. So in plain English, what that means is our job is to answer people's questions and to deal with providing them education that they can use to make intelligent decisions. But everything that we provide to the people of Asuago County must be based on research and we have to be able to provide where that research came from. So here in Asuago County, we operate in three different areas. Agriculture, of course, which is the backbone. Nutrition, health and safety, which Cornell calls human ecology. And the third one is youth development. We are the contact organization for the four-H program here in Asuago County. So we also have come in with a level budget request. If you look at the documents you have in front of you, it is actually broken down into three separate budget lines. Excuse me, three separate requests. The budget lists it as one budget line, but it's really three separate requests. So the first one is office and operations, again, level funded, what we've had for a number of years. The second one is a specific program that was put together, I don't know, six or seven years ago as a partnership with the county of Oswego. That's an ag economic development position. And so Oswego County funds that program through our organization. And then the third one is our participation in the Cornell teams that take care of the vegetable growers. So that is simply a pass-through. That money comes in from Asuago County and goes right back out to the Cornell teams. The way that that program is structured in Asuago County to be a part of that team, the money must flow through the cooperative extension, the local cooperative extension office. So a county cannot buy into the team by itself. So with that, we are requesting level funding from what we had last year. All right, can I answer any questions if we may ask?
Well, thank you very much and I would like to also extend you, I know you have a lot more information and updates and we'll set aside time to have you come in and give a presentation. There's so much great stuff happening. In the last month, we had had four-H month designation and we really have some great stuff coming on. So again.
You have to.
All right, that sounds great. Okay, if I could have a motion for the budget? Thank you, you have a second? Paul, any discussion?
This is just one good call. The, can you explain to me your membership contribution? What is that? Is it a monthly fee?
No, 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 no. People have the option of buying in to become part of the organization. Again, this is all written in statute. So for some people, if they, if they buy in, then they are entitled to publications that we produce. People could get those publications singly, you know, if you wanted to say just send me this or send me that. But when you buy in and you become a member, then you've got a year's worth of those publications. The other thing that happens is on the pass-through with teams, and that number is also represented in there. Again, it's a Cornell mandate. When the county joins the team and the whole county has to join the team. So, I mean, you can't have an individual person joining that team. So when the county joins teams, the next mandate is that an individual grower must become part of cooperative extension at the local level in order to participate with the team. Okay, so that's where those numbers are reflected.
Thank you.
Right, go ahead, sir.
I just, I want to thank you for everything you do. It's just wonderful the things that you're doing. I'm happy to give you that money.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I like that smile.
That is a good smile. It's so good you should have got a picture of that. That was great.
Did you get that? I don't think he's ever said that before.
Not only do I appreciate that, I'm being very honest, but it will be a pleasure to go back at the next general staff meeting and tell my staff that. That would be very, very nice, thank you.
It's truly a service that I think you can't get enough of it.
Thank you.
That's great, okay. No other further questions? Paul, I will look for, all in favor? Any votes? Great, thank you, thank you. All right, soil and water. Thank you all.
Let's give a very greeting intro and then jump right into the rest of the project. Asuago County Soil and Water, we're a, we're a natural resource agency charged with protecting and conserving the soil and water resource. And we do that through a series of programs in five primary areas, and that's water quality, forestry, invasive species, agriculture and education. In two thousand nineteen, we, we, you know, certainly had the same level funding request of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, which would be the same for us today. And with that, we were able to leverage over half a million dollars in funding last year. And this was, it's projected, of course, which is the return on investment of approximately three dollars and thirty-five cents. So with that, those are programs that are, you know, certainly helpful as a budget for us, the budget gap that we do have, but we're also able to put projects on the ground, assistance to the public, municipalities and the county itself. In twenty twenty, we are projecting over four dollars per dollar that the county would appropriate if approved. So we've always certainly appreciated the support and we certainly appreciate that we're going to continue to support it as well. And we accomplish that through this, the other additional funding that we do bring in. We do have eleven primary funding sources or grants that we tap into for that, whether it's state funding or competitive grants or federal funding. We also, just for our, for our educational programs, we actually accept approximately sixteen donors for that. And we also do this through several other earned income programs. And this is, we do have only three, three full-time staff, but last year, over the course of the year, we're able to employ ten interns as well, college-age interns. In regards to our budget, you will, you will notice, obviously, there's a, our budget has appeared to have doubled. Which historically, if you look in two thousand nineteen, we presented a, you know, internal or an operating budget. And this year, we've added really a total budget to reflect more accurately our expenses, which just includes, you'll notice at the very bottom in the, in the white, white road, you'll see project implementation. And that's just some of the projects that go on the ground, our technical assistance and, you know, and obviously even materials that go out on the ground as well for some of these conservation-related activities or projects. So as far as, there hasn't been any other very large, you know, large increases or decreases, fairly leveled, just that major, major change to our budget. But I think, as I said, that's a more accurate reflection of what we have going on. And our request is level at one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twelve thousand.
That's great. Thank you very much. I'm going to look for a motion to discuss that budget. Thanks, Marie. Second, that's great. I wanted to start off with Joe and thank you and your staff. I think, again, I appreciate that you guys are here every single, one of you is here every month, you're giving us an update. We are so in, in touch with everything going on up there. And for only a staff that's small to return that kind, I know, I speak for everyone, we really appreciate the work you do. So thank you very much, I'll pass that on to them. But I got Marie, that adds.
Of course.
Thank you, I've learned so much from you. Thank you on the trees, but my concern, forestry expenses, current a thousand, proposed zero for twenty. Are we replacing, I mean, we have several invasive species emergencies occurring. Our pines are being hit dramatically, the borer, the ash borer. What are we doing to reforest in Asuago County?
Let me touch on first the, as far as that expense. All we did, we haven't, we haven't singled out any other programs in our budget, so we did, we just took that out and rolled it into office supply and things of that nature. Because it's more of a supply budget, it's not a tree planting budget. Anything that we've done, so we do have, as we do timber sales and things of that nature, some of that money does support some of our budget and our staffing. And we do, some of that goes back to the county. We've never had a staff planting budget. We do have, if we, if we were to do that, we're to, and any of our forestry assistance that we give to municipalities as far as the Emerald Ash Borer workshops that we might do, any planning that we may help with, any of the public or any municipality or the county itself, is all done through outside funding. So we don't necessarily have a replanting, you know, replanting. We do that, as far as on the reforestation, the majority of that has been done naturally. In some cases, we may need to get rid of invasive species and we do that with control work with outside funding. So we'll do that with state funding or whatever grant that we've written to accomplish that. So we try to do that naturally. It's the cheapest, most cost-effective way of getting that done. And that's done through different cuts that you, you know, I'd be happy to explain that in a better way.
Dave had a little point on that, too.
Yeah, not in Joe's budget, but Joe certainly has been a part of the process through the planning department. We planted probably over a thousand trees in various communities over the last two or three years through various grant sources, working with Joe's office and city tree advisory boards at various places, a lot of them are like brownfield sites and things like that. So there is some kind of reforested going on in select areas, but separate from Joe's office, but in concert with them.
Not for Joe's budget.
Yeah.
Well, that's one of the points I want to touch on. Polaski is going to be doing urban reforest application grant. I would hope they'd reach out to you. And the other, the only other thing I want to say is I want to commend you.
And the other, the only other thing I want to say is I want to commend you on the intern program that you do. Being those people involved, I think that's wonderful.
Frank Glazer.
I just want to talk a little bit about the water. We talked before about across from, you know, Miller Site, the way you guys attack, whatever.
Right, water chestnuts.
Water chestnuts. It just seems, you know, I don't know if we could put more into it or what. It's not really in my district. It's more in legislative, lack of district. But it seems to be getting bigger year by year. And that's a major thoroughfare for people coming into Oswego County, they're coming down and going up into the harbor festering, going into the lake. I was wondering if, we're losing more and more fishing spots.
I'm happy to, you know, to discuss that. I think that we're looking at, you know, that particular spot and perhaps, you know, maybe presenting to the county or just a change that maybe we'll harvest it this year, you know, to get that, that out of there. It's such an aggressive invasive species. You know, I think overall, there's been some great control. We were able to take out, just with hand pulling alone, over, you know, almost 17 tons last year just with our, with our interns. And we have some improvements to make that even more next year. We do have some plans for that. But as far as that particular patch, I'm happy to, you know, to discuss that with you later time and look into it.
Joe, you work with the local municipalities when you're planning that at all? I mean, maybe that's a piece too that in the future might not be a bad idea that, you know, we know where they are. We do know, but it'd be a bad idea to have a little more of that.
Potentially, Paul.
Well, yeah, or any of them.
We've been, I mean, as a, you know, we pursued it as a, you know, as an agency, you know, you know, as an agency, we pursued the outside funding, both federal and state grants. And, you know, and unfortunately, both of our, our two funding sources adding up to around $125,000 actually have dried up come perhaps 20, you know, 2021. So beyond that, we have had to, to switch some funding over. And we have some, some funds, but it's perhaps funded at about three-quarters level. So we will, you know, we're.
There's still those discussions that we had about that. Cheryl, Cheryl, Phil and Dave, that maybe those local leadership wouldn't be a bad idea to have those conversations. That's great. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Joe, thank you very much. Okay, that leads us just with this Super Currier. Come on up there, ma'am.
Good morning, everybody.
Welcome to this.
Thank you. I will do a very short break. So OCO has been partnering with the county since the Republican mayors for public transportation. And earlier you had a budget amendment that amended the state operating dollars that we use to operate public transportation in Oswego County. So essentially, what you have before here, here is an estimate of what we think those state operating dollars would be for 2020. And that really is based on heads on the bus and miles driven on the buses. Frank, you mentioned earlier the loss of a grant or a contract that we had that may and has impacted the public bus routes in the county. But as we move forward, we hope that we would obtain additional contracts that will help expand the public bus system or, or those bus routes. Because what we do is if, the only public bus money that we get, transit money, is at $900,000 or whatever the SOA operating dollars would be for the year. And then what we've been able to do is do other contracts. So we create what's called the shared ride system where we're, there's a public bus rider on that bus and somebody who's under contract with another, you know, could be a nursing home. And we've been able to expand the bus route as a result. But when those contracts go away, then it impacts that public system. Because ultimately, all we have to rely on truly is that state operating assistance dollars. If we can couple it with other contracts that we have. So this is pass-through money and comes from the state of County to us.
That's great. And I just, well, actually, let me look for a motion discussion. Troy, do you want to make a motion? And then Morris? Okay. So it's been this thing a long. But as far as that goes, again, this is, this is a piece of the bigger picture that we actively need to look at and are looking at through many ways. So again, this is pass-through money. If it ends up being different, we will amend that amount at no cost, obviously, for this specific project. Okay, any further discussion? Ed, were you? You got a hand up there?
I just, I have to go back and it's, my point, my point is that if there's more money needed, because it's part of the poverty task force, the biggest thing was transportation, okay? And that's what we have to look at in order to further our growth. And if there's something that we, you need, what does the county need to do to be able to, for you to supply the transportation that is needed? Not just what is out there, but what you can do. Personally, I'd rather get rid of Central and just let them do, you know, be on their own, okay? We've got you. And that's what I would rather put that money to, and I'm sorry.
Go ahead. That's great. And real quick, there is an RFP or in the process of, or working with a voluntary transportation coordinator. That could help us. There's like, again, much, much bigger picture. Stay tuned. Again, we do have the, an active transportation committee that I refer to everyone to be part of. We know it's a big deal. We need to keep that out. So thank you very much. Any, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? A great, the last one we have is Dave's and the economic developing. We need to improve that or we do not. His department.
Are they separate?
They're all free.
You can do separately? Do them all together?
So in the interest of your time, I'll start by saying thank you. And if you look at the bottom line for all three together, the net increase in the cost of the county is about 2% from last year to this year. And that's consistent pretty much with the collective bargaining agreements that you have in place for the various bargaining groups. Happy to answer any questions about specific lines, but we did our best to hold expenses that were within our control at zero or better and increased revenue where it was possible.
Okay, let me look for a motion for, we need to all, can we do all three together?
Yes.
Okay, I'll look for a motion for all three. I have that motion. Do I have a second? Paul, thank you, Paul. Okay, let's discuss anything specifically as for reviewing this that folks have questions. And it's quite a bit of information, our dollars.
I have a really generic question. Why are, in the, whatever we call it, you say, the retirement, is state retirement is zero in all of them?
That's, sick it's.
Zero percent. I mean, zero, zero percent of it has been.
Because it's, that's going to pay, because that gets paid out as a lump sum at the end of the year at the state.
And you may notice just as a note that if you look at, and I'm not sure which documents you have. Do they have this one? Okay, now skip it.
Well, I'm going to ask you a question. What's the date? This is back to.
Yeah, Friday.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Frank?
No, I vote on the floor. Can't vote here, so.
Sounds good. Okay, Marie, did you have anything?
I guess I can.
With that in mind, I'll vote for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone.
We did have some department updates, but we're not going to be able to get to those today. We're some marketing initiatives as well as the status of the website. We're happy, well, by the time we meet again, the website will be launched. What we're going to do today was give you, you know, a preview of what that looks like and where we are and what challenges we've had. I don't know that we have the time left to do that, so.
But thank you. I know we're all eagerly awaiting this website, especially for those who were checking out the website last night with the election results are coming in, you're scrolling through on your phone trying to figure out. So I'm excited.
David's here, he's worked very hard to get us to where we are. Was so eager today to give you the sneak peek, but unfortunately, God doesn't allow.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that in mind, appropriate motion. Maybe Morris, thank you. Motion, second call, all in favor? Any opposed?